Any apologies, oh sorry, first of all, the minutes of the meeting of the 2nd of February have been laid on the table for half an hour, may I assign them as a true record? Thank you, any apologies for absence please?
Thank you Leader, we received apologies from councillor Tom Martin.
Thank you, are there any declarations of interests?
None received in advance Leader.
Thank you, item four, there are no questions from members of the public. Item five is the executive forward programme on pages nine to twelve, members have there any amendments, additions, dilutions to make? If not, are those papers agreed? Thank you very much. Item six is the budget management report and it's set out on pages thirteen to twenty, there are six recommendations. Councillor Wyatt Ramsdale.
Thank you Leader. The budget management report reviews the position against budget for the year-to-date for the general fund, the housing revenue account and the capital programmes. The latest forecast for the general fund revenue is an overspend of £64,000, after allowing for all requested approvals compared to an underspend of £16,000 reported previously. These figures are small in the context of a net budget of £14 million. The most significant change to report is that development controlled income and costs are forecast overspend by £178,000. This overspend results from extra costs incurred due to additional technical consultancy work and a drop-off in planning fee income over the winter period. The details are in paragraph nine. There's mitigation of this from the over-achievement of the staff vacancy target by £85,000. There is a recommendation being made to set aside £50,000 of additional car parking income to cover the costs of modifying the car park machines. This is therefore not included in the variance table on page fourteen, it is reflected in recommendation one. Regarding the general fund capital during the year-to-date, council has already approved 2.2 million rescheduling within the capital programme to reflect delivery timings on the key projects. A review of progress in the last quarter of the year has resulted in the rescheduling for further £304,000 for a range of smaller schemes. These are explained in paragraphs fourteen to seventeen and lead to the four recommendations regarding the general fund capital programme, number two to five, on page nineteen. The housing revenue account remains on budget with one small recommendation to via £50,000 from cyclical maintenance to HRA or Housing Revenue Account Void Works, see paragraph nineteen, this is recommendation six. Leader, there are six recommendations on page nineteen of the report and on page three of the agenda, thank you.
Thank you very much, colleagues, anybody wish to speak on this item? No, in that case, agenda item six, there are six recommendations, are they agreed? Thank you very much. Item seven is the Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area, the avoidance strategy reviewer draft for consultation, it's set out in detail on pages twenty-one to forty-four. Understand councillor Williamson you wish to speak and you have four minutes.
Thank you very much Leader. The public question, I guess, addresses some of the points that I was going to, I was going to cover, so I'll try not to duplicate those. The basic question, and it was asked by the inspector which flawed the Waverley Core Strategy in 2006, still applies, and he asked the basic question, where is the evidence that the mitigation is effective? The law has not changed. This report and the revised avoidance strategy explain for the past decade, the strategy and its financial formula have been founded upon false assumptions and must now be changed. The council expects us to believe that in their desperation to keep imposing unlimited house building in Farnham's green fields, they have now managed to package their SANG mitigation properly. We know that the law requires convincing, objective evidence that the mitigation is effective, but sadly, we're once again faced with a strategy that is self-contradictory, disingenuous and fatuous. It admits that the assessment of the effectiveness of the strategy is vital, yet the council still has no assessment of its effectiveness. This proposal is based on a misrepresentation of the results of the 2014 Farnham Park Visitor Survey. It actually found that although the number of visitors to the park had not increased, which it clearly says, the number of park users who were also using the SPAS has increased considerably. That's the exact opposite to the result you'd want to see if it was effective. On page thirty-five of our document, it mentions some of the legal issues in para 7.2, but it fails to mention the main constraint that the strategy seeks to overcome, that consents for plans and projects cannot be granted unless the council has before it an appropriate assessment containing convincing, objective, scientific evidence that the strategy is effective. To omit the main legal constraint, it's just not on. It gives the impression of flouting the legal constraints to avoid the necessary limitations on house building that affects not just Farnham, but two-thirds of the borough that lie within the visitor catchment area of the Thames Basin and Wielden Heath SPAS. Again, look at page thirty-two, para 5.6. The report states that it's vital that the strategy is effective, but it provides no assessment of its effectiveness. The main point that matters is whether a strategy works. It's ridiculous to consult on this without providing the public with an assessment of whether it actually works. Natural England 2012/13 Spa Visitor Survey confirms that the number of visitors to the spa increased by about 10%. It's far more than the percentage increase in the number of homes. The law requires that you provide evidence to the contrary. On behalf of the residents, I simply ask that you demand the evidence of this mitigation, that this mitigation is effective, before spending more time and money on this pretence and move on to producing a genuine local plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor. Again, Mr Evans, there's some technical points in there regarding what should be laid before us, have you any comments you want to make before I go to the portfolio holder?
Just very briefly Leader, if I may, reference was made to the 2006 inspector's report, and I think we need to remind ourselves that actually rather a lot of water has passed under the bridge since then. Since then, at a regional level, an awful lot of work has been done by a number of parties to address the issues relating to the Thames Basin SPA. There is a development plan policy in place, which is in the South East Plan, it's the only part of the South East Plan which has been retained, and that sets the development plan framework, we don't need to revisit that for the purpose of this exercise. The second thing to remind members is that this isn't Waverley just doing it on its own, Waverley is part of a strategic partnership with, I think, nine other local authorities who are impacted on by the SPA. That strategic partnership includes the experts, Natural England, and also the government and also the Royal Society of Protection of Birds. So I think the key question for members is, is the approach we're taking consistent with the development plan? The answer is yes. Is the approach we're taking consistent with the avoidance strategy framework which the joint strategic partnership has set up? The answer to that is yes. So I think members, this is a document which I think you can take forward to consultation with confidence that it's in line with policy and it's in line with law. Thank you Leader.
Thank you very much, that's most helpful. Councillor Adams, do you want to add in the thing?
I'll add a couple of points and then I will comment on the report. The footfall in the spa of course is not solely related to Farnham residents, there are a large number of other boroughs around us which also have footfall in the spa. All we can do with is the evidence that we ourselves collect, which is clearly laid out in the report. Now, the report itself is solely seeking permission for a consultation on the revised avoidance strategy. The strategy is in accordance with Natural England's approved approach for providing alternative space for the recreation of homeowners living within a five-kilometre zone of the spa. This applies to most of Farnham. Additional space is required whenever a new home is constructed. The report covers a number of issues, the principles behind the avoidance strategy, otherwise known as SANG, the justification of an proposed increase in capacity at Farnham Park, developers' options for providing SANG, potential new SANG sites and a revised contribution tariff. On this occasion, the major adjustment to the capacity of Farnham Park is a significant change in the avoidance strategy. It has arisen due to much lower occupancy levels in the surrounding properties, measurements of footfall in the park and improvements to the facilities required for SANG qualification. These facts have been regularly reported to the Western Planning Committee. With these changes, the unallocated capacity would increase to 1,462 dwellings. When possible, both Farnham Town Council and Waverley encourage larger developers to provide their own SANG, preferably on-site or if the site is too small elsewhere, so that smaller developers are able to take advantage of Waverley's SANG. These two approaches should allow for a few years of housing developments in and around Farnham, however, this may not be enough for the future. Consequently, Waverley is looking for additional sites for SANG, it is likely to take some time before any new SANG is available, as investment would be required in the land to match the SANG criteria after Natural England has approved the site. SANG sites have to be funded for use in perpetuity, which is currently eighty years. On developer-owned sites, they would fund the creation and recover the costs from sales. Waverley are able to claim a tariff on each approved development, either through S106 agreements or in future through SIL. Appendix three shows how this tariff is, this draft tariff is calculated. All this is included in the consultation. Leader, the recommendation is at the bottom of page three.
Thank you very much. Any other colleagues wish to speak? Thank you. Colleagues, there is one recommendation, is that agreed? Thank you. Item eight on the agenda is the approval to submit planning applications for the conversion of four community rooms, this is set out in detail on pages forty-five to forty-eight. Councillor Williamson, you wish to speak on this?
Once again, thank you very much Leader. The question I was going to ask has already been answered by the officers and I'd like to thank them here for their very speedy response, because I only gave them the question this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor King?
Thank you very much Leader. The Waverley Housing Service is continually looking for ways to maximise its assets and increase the supply of affordable housing to meet local need. There are currently thirteen community rooms across the borough owned by the HRA, and over time, the use of these facilities has decreased. They've become a bit of an anachronism actually, and they have become underutilised resources, sorry, they've become underutilised resources where expenditure on things like maintenance and heating has well exceeded the income. Following a review of the community rooms by a task group which included tenant representatives, four of these rooms were very easily identified as having potential to convert to residential use. These are listed in the report that you have in front of you. Ward Members and Parish and Town Councils have been consulted and the proposal scrutinised by the ONS Housing Improvement Subcommittee. Further work is underway to review the options for the future use of the remaining nine community rooms in the borough. But in order to convert any community rooms to affordable homes, planning consent has to be achieved for change of use. I would ask you to support the recommendation on page forty-seven, to submit a planning application for conversion of each of these four rooms to increase the supply of affordable homes throughout the borough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, anyone else wish to speak? There is one recommendation on agenda item eight, is that agreed? Agenda item nine is Frenchham Great Pond and Common Site Amenities Upgrade Project, set out on pages forty-nine to sixty-two in some detail again. Councillor Williamson, I think you wish to speak?
Getting used to this. The proposed new building looks really quite nice, but that really isn't the point. This is a spa, and as we've just discussed, it's this council's policy to reduce visitor pressure on SPAS. This is a proposal to urbanise Frenchham Great Pond, and even more importantly, it's a proposal that would urbanise the spa. For those reasons, I'm against this in principle. The existing car park is informal for those people who visit there, I visit it with my dog. It's informal, the bays are unmarked with charging for people who park there at weekends and bank holidays from April through to September. During that period, it's noticeable how many people park free on Bacon Lane, they're predominant, you see the same cars, it's predominantly the same dog walkers. You're forcing them, well not forcing them, but you're encouraging them to park on Bacon Lane. Charging for car parking causes a proportion of these regular users to find alternative informal parking elsewhere on this sort of 400-acre spa. Now, if you're trying to protect the wildlife, which is what it's all about, it would be the last thing that you would do, because what you're doing is encouraging people to park their cars, take their dogs into places where the birds are nesting. They're not nesting around the Great Pond because there's lots of people walking around there with their dogs, but you're encouraging them to go to where they are nesting. It's absolutely ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Councillor Thornton?
Thank you Leader. Well, do you want me to talk about, I'll talk about the car park, bringing the car parks in line with National Trust charging, and obviously, the visitor centre isn't just for visitors, it's we're going to have schools there as well for education purposes, and the footprint isn't a lot larger than what's there already, that's about all I've got to say really, thank you Leader.
Thank you, yeah, would you like to talk about the item in general, is there anything else you want to say?
I think councillor Potts is going to cover that, I think.
Thank you very much. Councillor Potts?
Leader, thank you. I think this is a great scheme, it's a site with facilities that are clearly no longer fit for purpose, and we discussed this at some length and had quite a lengthy debate at our last full council meeting. It is a very well-used site, no doubting about that, but we have some £150,000 in repairs that are required just to bring that building up to standard. This proposal relocates the facility on-site, it gives us a more sustainable, energy-efficient building, and it offers us everything from fit-for-purpose public toilets, ranger's office, a cafe, educational and multi-function rooms. It is a real invest-er-save project, and it will reduce its running costs on the site by approximately £38,000 -40,000 a year, so there is a clear business case for it. None of this has gone ahead, it has been talked about for quite some time, and we've gone out and talked at length to people like the National Trust to get their opinion and their views, and we wouldn't be coming before you tonight with this update, should we have not consulted in a great deal with them and got a very favourable response from them. We've also had a number of issues, as people will be aware, and it became the subject of a JAG in Bacon Lane with parking, and that actually became a community safety issue, and a number of members will be aware that as a result of that, one of the things that we have looked at very carefully, and our planning within this new scheme, is a revised car park, to actually deal with the issues of public safety in Bacon Lane, and again, that has the endorsement of the National Trust. So I think it's a great scheme, I think it addresses a number of issues that we have, and I would like to fully support the recommendations before executive this evening. Thank you Leader.
Thank you. Councillor Adams?
I'd just like to comment that the JAG worked quite hard, I was a member of it, and the rural clearway has been implemented in Bacon Lane, so in fact, anybody can still park there if they wish, but they're liable to get a police penalty.
Thank you. Councillor Ramsdale?
Thank you Leader. I just wanted to add from a financial perspective, this is a great scheme that clearly addresses issues of quality to do with what's available for people on the site, and for a positive financial return, there's a payback period, even if we fund it all, of 23 years, so it's a good news story all round.
Thank you very much. Any other colleagues? Thank you, well, there are three recommendations to agenda item nine, are they agreed? Item ten is the post-payment parking scheme pilot, which you'll see is in Cranley. Councillor Dinas?
Leader, when we conducted the parking review last year, one of the commitments we made was to continue to explore alternative payment methods to maximise flexibility for customers and encourage increased use of car parks. We had been working with Cranley Chamber of Commerce to investigate a system that would offer this flexibility and encourage more people to visit and stay longer in our towns. The post-payment parking system is effectively a form of pay-on-exit and gives people more flexibility to stay as long as they wish and not have to rush back to their car. It also means that people only pay for the time that they have parked, and we are grateful for the support of the Cranley Chamber of Commerce in developing these proposals. The opportunity to bid for funds from Surrey County Council's Town Centre Revitalisation Fund to help with the cost of setting up the scheme as a pilot in Cranley means we can hopefully move this project forward and demonstrate the positive impact this flexible payment method can have on visitor numbers, the length of their stays and ultimately on the local economy. Payment by cash will of course always remain an option for those who prefer to continue to use that method of payment, and we also expect to have the telephone payment system operating again in the very near future. And we will continue to look at other payment options for making paying for parking an easy and as flexible as possible. There are three recommendations which are shown on page five of your agenda and pages sixty-five and sixty-six, which I commend you to support. Thank you Leader.
Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you Leader, I strongly support this, for as long as I've been involved with the Godwin Chamber of Commerce, this issue has come up again and again and again, and I'm very happy that we now have through new technology a system which may allow us to trial this without having to put in barriers or have manned barriers or even two exit lanes, which would be the case otherwise if you did have barriers. I think I'd need to emphasise to anyone who's probably listening that this is a trial, so we need to see how it goes, I know the Cranley Chamber are very much behind it, they're going to help publicise it locally and also on the day it goes into operation so that people are fully aware of what it does, how it works, and the fact you don't have to pay by card, you can pay by cash at the end of it, but it just gives you that flexibility if you're out shopping or eating in Cranley, you don't have to rush back because your ticket is just about to expire. So I think it's a great thing, I'm glad we're doing it, it has got a big cost, so we need to evaluate it once it has hopefully successfully worked, but I think in my opinion, if it does successfully work, it's something that we will be able to roll out, because there will be an economic argument with the gentleman on my right saying that is fine, it's an invest-er-save and it could well be an invest-er-save, so I'm glad we're doing it, thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor King?
Thank you very much, I entirely agree with councillor Reynolds. I think, thinking back to the distant days when I had the, I'm not sure whether it was misfortune, to be portfolio holder for car parking, one of the most prominent requests from our residents was always to look at payment on exit, and I agree, it makes good sense, however, the cost of actually implementing this was at the time prohibitive, so I really welcome the opportunity to bid for the Surrey funding to help us to be able to achieve at least a trial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on this one? No, thank you, well then, the item ten, there are three recommendations, are they agreed? Item eleven is Weyden Lane former landfill site, the options review. Councillor Williamson?
Thank you very much Leader. Once again, I'm a bit disappointed with the detail in the plans. I'm of course very sad to see that yet again, the residents have been completely ignored, I've been sent a sizeable report by Brambleton Park Group, who are, appear from their report to be very frustrated and unhappy with these proposals, and also the vast majority of residents that I've spoken to who seem to oppose this in principle. The idea of spending some £50,000 of residents' money on investigating a hugely expensive proposal that requires funding from building houses on the memorial ground, completely contrary to the 1947 deed of gift, raises numerous questions. For instance, the plans for Brambleton Park don't show the necessary pavilion or the clubhouse, the changing rooms, the floodlights, I mean, this is quite significant. But I think really what's equally important is the idea of building on the memorial ground, that brings the council plans for the memorial hall and the Gostrey Centre into question. Common sense would suggest that there seems to be no good reason now why you should build that horrendous-looking and very expensive extension to the very attractive memorial hall, compromising both of them. A possibility is that you have a, now you've got more space or could have more space, you have a purpose-built day centre to replace the Gostrey Centre. Absolutely sure, that would be cheaper and probably more fit for purpose. In my view, in light of the proposal, it simply makes no sense to continue with your current memorial hall proposal, so will you be revising your approach to re-providing a Gostrey Centre? Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor. Portfolio holder, I don't know if you would speak, but I'll get an officer to deal with some of the points regarding lighting and one or two other things that were raised, or whether you wish to deal with it?
Yeah, I can say a few words and then if Calvin or Damien want to take over. I mean, we did, I ran, I was chairman of the SIG, and we had quite a few people in, the football club and the Weyden Lane, Brambleton Park, community and people, and we did talk at length of what could happen there, and we do need to do something with the land. If I want to hand over to Damien, he can say a bit more.
Yeah, either Mr Roberts or Richard, I don't mind who does it.
If I kick off and then there's items of more detail. So the SIG was focused on looking at options to bring the former landfill site back into public use, and most importantly, to look at options that could be potentially financially viable, because we know that the do-nothing option will still cost public resources in the short term and significant costs in the medium term. Having looked at all possible options, and including consulting closely with a representative from the Friends of Brambleton Park, from the Friends of Brambleton Park, representing the interests of many local residents, the SIG came to a conclusion that the most likely, most viable option available was to look at the relocation of the Farnham Football Club. There was mentioned earlier by councillor Williamson of the memorial hall. This proposal has no impact whatsoever on the memorial hall, and the memorial hall is therefore not referenced in this report. The option on the table, we need to test thoroughly in terms of its feasibility, which is why we're asking the executive for funding to allow us to do that, and until that work is undertaken, we don't yet have a firm proposal on the table. We are still very much at the investigation stage. Thank you, leader.
Thank you very much. Anything further you wish to say, Councillor Thornton?
No, the report on page sixty-nine has two recommendations, and I commend those recommendations to the executive.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Anybody else wish to speak? Item eleven on the agenda, two recommendations, are they agreed?
Very agreed.
Item twelve is the surrender and renewal of a ground lease at Farnham Wanderers Cricket Club on page ninety-one. There's several portfolio holders on this. I think it's very clearly set out in the papers, some of which are exempt, so if we want to discuss it, we will have to go into exempt, but it is on page ninety-one to ninety-four. Everybody satisfied with the papers? And then the exempt paper? Is everybody happy? Thank you very much. Then the recommendation, one recommendation to item twelve, is that agreed?
Very agreed.
The executive director's actions.
One action, leader, for urgent reworks costing £25,000 to be met by a vehement from existing budgets. Thank you, leader.
Yes, thank you very much. Essential work. Is that noted?
Yes.
Thank you. I now move that pursuant procedure rule twenty and in accordance with section 100a (brackets four) of the Local Government Act 1972, the press and public be excluded from the meeting during the consideration of the following items.